My watch says it's six o'clock. We're gonna go by my watch today. So hereby, call the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman and Rancho Viejo on October the 9th, 2006, six o'clock to order. Sheriff, what you do, road call please?
I recognize upon present Mr. Dorsett, Mrs. Garza, Mr. Huffert, Mrs. Lutens, and Mr. Salinas, so we do have a quorum for the meeting. And Daniel Renfro, legal counsel is present.
We'll stand and Ms. Lutens will give us the invocation, and then we'll pledge allegiance, and then we also have the new wording for the pledge allegiance to the state flag, and we'll do that.
Father, we come together tonight thankful again for the opportunity to do so. We as the Rancho Viejo Board of Aldermen strive to recognize they have responsibilities to our residents and businesses, and ask for your direction and guidance in making decisions that affect us all. Father, we also pray that all leaders of our great country be granted the wisdom and understanding and strength to uphold what is right. In closing, please continue to protect our service personnel both home and abroad. In your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Out of the Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
We'll have to get the wither. We have a gentleman called me wanting to make a presentation or talk to the Board of Alderman from number 12, Pizarro. He's not here, but even in spite of residence form being number four, if he does come in, then we'll listen to him, see what he has to say. I'm gonna pass these down to Carla, and she can bring them back. These are pictures we've taken of the site. He's gonna complain about the -- and that's not him, that's a movement of his office.
He's complaining.
He's complaining, but it's not the same one. He's gonna complain about a fresh letter we got, he got from the town. All right, resident number four, residence form. Anyone wish to speak on some subject other than what's on the agenda?
Nobody else. Mayor, I just, I know we've already voted on it, but I guess being a tree hugger, I would ask the board to reconsider their action on taking down the palm trees on Cortez. The valley is known for its palm trees, much like California, the redwood forest and stuff. It takes 100 years to grow a tree like that, and it's a shame to cut it down, so to speak. And so...
We'll...
This is for the trees at Cortez.
Yeah, that's correct. We will, we'll have that before us tonight on the construction of that road, but we have had at least one death because of those trees and multiple wrecks. One involved with a woman that was nine months pregnant and had to be rushed to the emergency room. If a palm frond blew off, hit a walker, jogger, I think that would be the city's liability. Is that correct, Dan?
Well, you have limited, you have a cap on damages, but if you fail to maintain the tree appropriately, you could disintegrate.
And if one of the palm fronds came off, hit the car windshield, the car went through a house, I know that person would feel terrible about it, as I do about the person that was killed running into the tree, or the pregnant lady that hit the tree coming out of there, whatever they swimming pool area was. So I personally know that there are some people other than you that would like to keep them there, but I think for the safety of the town and for the citizens of the town that we need to, my personal opinion is we need to remove them.
Well, maybe we could consider building an island type of structure that would, you know, at least...
If we had some, if we had some more footage, we could probably set a south pondry kind of island down that runway there.
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't have, I mean, well, would the fight be worth it to go onto the country club's property and onto the property owner's property? Would that be worth it to gain the additional four or five feet that we would need to do that? That's, that's a subject. But it's a good point. When we get to number seven, why don't we go over to that?
Okay.
Number five, was, did anyone else have anything that wanted to say at the residence form? Number five, approval of the minutes. I think you have a package in your, in your package, you have the minutes from the previous meeting. If there, are there any changes? And if not, can I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Number six, consideration approval of Section 11 Engineering for Road Construction and appraisal of lots to be on the condition that 75 percent of the cost of the project. This we brought up last meeting and approved it, but the verbiage in it said 75 percent of the lot owners. I note that everyone understood that it was 75 percent of the cost, because in our case, Paul Smith's not owning those lots, but putting up $250,000. So it's 75 percent of the cost of the project, no matter where the money comes from. And that's what the change is in number six from what we approved last meeting. So can I...
That's 25 percent upfront.
Yeah. So...
Mayor, I just want to ask one question.
Yes.
I thought she owned a lot to lot.
Well, she may own some lots, but she's putting up $250,000 for Pablo Villalde, who's not putting up money. Frank Russell is managing those 17 lots, and he's putting up money for those 17 lots. So the money that's coming up is over and above any one person's lots. But at the same time, if another lot owner says, guys, we're only at 73 percent, I want to put up an additional $7,000 to get us to 75 percent, there's no reason, I don't think, we shouldn't allow that. So 75 percent of the cost. Do you hear a motion to make this change to what we approved last meeting? Yes, ma'am?
Ma'am?
Sure.
I would like to ask a question regarding the concrete shelter or curb in Greenwich as engineered by V-Mud. Is that the same as the sorrow? Same concrete shelter?
The concrete shelter may be the same, or it may be a lay-down curb, but the drainage is something different from the concrete shelter. The drainage is, the drainage plant to get the water off of the lots and off of the streets and into a drainage area, whether it be the Resaca, or whether it be down to the swales that are running down Carmen.
I understand on the concrete shelter or curb, we don't have any curbs here in Rancho Just.
At Santa Ana, between Carmen and Past River Terrace, we have curves there.
Yes.
Oh, and also in the bend, and also in the...
Yes, when you do subdivision.
In La...
All right.
Yeah. But they have the opportunity of putting concrete shelters in or curbs in, as long as those streets have, are lined by some stabilizing material that we approved. Okay. Now, do you hear a motion to make these changes to approve?
I make a motion to approve the Section 11 Engineering for Road Construction and appraisal of lots on the condition that 75 percent of the cost of the project is agreed to be paid up.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Number seven, review of bids for road rehabilitation project, Cortez from the railroad tracks to Pima, Rancho Viejo Drive from Alvarado to Zapata/Valboa, and award of the contract. We have a bid opening on Thursday, and we had three bidders. PG Construction, R&amp;R Pavement, excuse me, PG Construction only bid on the concrete curb. R&amp;R Pavement, Ferguson, and G&amp;T Pavement. The total bids were from R&amp;R Pavement, $194,035, from Ferguson, $29,155, and for G&amp;T Pavement, We also got a letter from Gonzalez Engineering, signed by Mondo Gonzalez, that reads, Dear Mayor Flood, as a result of the review of the bid submitted on October the 4th, 2007, Rancho Viejo Pavement Project, we have determined that G&amp;T Pavement Company is a little better. We are familiar with the work, and hereby recommend them for the project. One of the things that came up is that R&amp;R Pavement bid $9.75 a linear foot for the concrete shelters, whereas G&amp;T Pavement bid $9.99, so a difference of 24 cents per linear foot. The difference in price on that would be $42,900 versus $43,956, or $1,056 more. But because it's one contractor doing the work, and the prices are so close, we determine that we want to give the bid, would like to give the bid to G&amp;T Pavement in total for both the concrete shelters and for the road construction. Mr. Gonzalez said that that was what he thought should be done, and checked with Dan Renfro, and Dan said that that was okay.
Having two different contractors in the same area over the same time period would be really clumsy, and I really do recommend that for that small amount of difference, we just let the one contractor manage the entire project.
Other question.
Yes.
Who was the one that paved the Pizarro?
G&amp;T, same one. Same one. I think you can, you can ask Mr. Gonzalez this, but I don't think that you can blame G&amp;T Construction for Pizarro. They told V-Mud that they couldn't do the job there. One of the things that happened on the Pizarro project is, as you know, those manholes are in at various offsets within the street. Some are the middle, some are the sides, and so forth. When they put those in, they put those in level. The street's not level. The street has a...
Crown.
Crown from the top going to the shoulder. So they couldn't use a paving machine to do the paving because of those kind of, where there were the manholes. And also, you'll notice that Pizarro, some of those swales that have come up in the road are where they cut the road to put the water in from one side of the road to make connection and sewer to the house. V-Mud didn't pack those back, but that time, Lambda was $8,000 over budget, and they were changing and using Rancho, V-Mud people to fill those in and compact it and so forth. So...
Besides that, they didn't use our, what we have adopted for...
That's correct.
Right.
So one of the, one of the things in this bid that all people bid on was what Mr. Dorsett mentioned, that's removing trees and filling holes. There is, in G&amp;T's paving, in G&amp;T's bid, there is $2,995 to take those trees out, remove them, fill in the holes and compact the holes. And when they take the trees out, they're taking the trees out down to below the roots. So there won't, so the roots will then deteriorate, decay, and cause holes at a later time. So the plan is to take them all the way out and not just use something to kill them, which will decay the trees and create pulp, which will then create a less solid base for the, for the street. But that's one of the things that is in this bid as a separate line item. The big difference in the bid, of course, is the asphalt. That's the largest single item. And the difference is, G&amp;T's pavement is at $8.99 versus Ferguson at 13, and versus R&amp;R Pavement at 14.75. All the others are lower too, but that's where the big dollars are. The, out of the total project, 75, of the 143,000, 75,000 approximate dollars are in the asphalt. Now, this, the information that they bid on was incorrect. They'll, we will, we have two inches of asphalt there, we're putting another inch and a half overlay on top of that. But at the railroad tracks, we have to redo that base and subbase totally. And when we do that, we're gonna discard the asphalt that's there, so we're gonna have a change order for two inches of asphalt to be put down rather than an inch and a half on that small section between the railroad and approximately El Alto. So that would be two inches there.
Mondo, is, is, is he aware of this spread?
Yes.
Yes, we had an opportunity on Friday and met with him and discussed it, and they said they...
They needed the work, is what they said.
He, he bid on two projects, and I knew this from my working with the City of Brownsville. He had two projects that he bid on, and he came in short, second on both of them, so he was not able to get that, that work. And he'd just completed a project with the City of Brownsville. I also want to point, I'd like to go back to another subject. Part of the problem, and this is my opinion, I helped the mayor attend a workshop with the mud when the problems were going on in Pizarro. The problem was that they had not just two contractors, they had basically three contractors working on that project. One was the Valley Mud, the other was the utility contractor that did the sanitary sewers and the valves, and the third, of course, was the paver. The paver just paved over what they left for him. He was supposed to do the surfacing, and that further illustrates my recommendation on having one contractor do the work on this particular project, 'cause then he's overall responsible for the, for the entire project. The, the other thing that Mr. Montalvez, the bidder on this project, asked me if we wanted to relocate them. Of course, he might charge more for relocating those trees. I could find out if there's a relocating cost.
He, he had said he would relocate them...
Yeah.
Or dispose of them.
Yeah.
And, or sell them. And we told him that we didn't care whether he sold them or not, that when he took them out, that they were his property. The other thing I, Dan, on that specifically asked him on the asphalt price, if he was comfortable with $8.99 from the other people bid, a price that would conclude considerably higher, he said he was. Yes, ma'am?
I have a floor. Yes, if we can find out how much it would cost to replant them somewhere else, because I also would like to preserve, you know, native trees. Another question I have is, when the street is done, will it be one solid surface? I just want another Pizarro, that first street on Cortez.
Of course, if you've ever watched the paving machines, they have what they call the screed, which is a, the area where the asphalt is fed into the machine, and at the end, it's laid on the surface, that, that's a straight line. So it, it has, and that's what we call a crown. He'll pour one side, and, and of course, also because we don't want to cut the traffic off totally, and we don't want him paving the, the street and blocking it off for emergency vehicles or the homeowner. So he'd probably do one side, and then come in and do the other side with a crown.
But that's the way the machine is.
Yes.
The machine's built that way to do one side, and then do the other side.
But it will be one continuous layer, yes, ma'am?
That's my question.
Yes.
Excuse me.
From the middle now, with one continuous layer, but you got half of it being laid, and then come back at the second half, and they'll smooth out that seam that would be normally down the middle.
All right. One other question, Mr. Gonzalez. What is the reputation of this company? I have not seen their work or...
He has done some work here before, and he did, he did a very acceptable job.
On what street?
I'm sure you remember which one G&amp;T did. I think they did El Alto. Here, between here and, and the pub house, that segment was done by, by G&amp;T about four years ago, five years ago. They have completed a project that I engineered for the City of Brownsville about, about four or five years ago, and also one at the Fort of Brownsville, and they did satisfactory work on, on all the projects. We always have a few problems with, they're not 100 percent, but, but we were able to resolve everything and get the project completed properly.
Yes.
Well, I, I was kind of like Carla speaking.
I just had a comment about the trees. I'm a bit of a tree hugger myself, but my concern is, with trees that old and that large, will they survive, number one, moving? My understanding is the palm trees have a rather shallow root ball, so moving them is risky, but then again, so is leaving them. Certainly, we have the liability, but the damage to the root system and paving around them is quite high. I had a tree that I almost lost in my front yard due to the Pizarro paving, and had to have a forester come in and address that with me. Like I said, I'm a tree hugger, but in this situation, given that we do have a liability, I unfortunately feel they have to be moved.
And I, I want to tell you, the liability to the town is one thing, but the life that was given is another. That, to me, is the strongest argument for...
Did you give a little bit of details on that?
Chief, would you like to go over there?
On the gentleman that lost his life there, I believe it was several years ago, we're probably talking about maybe 15 years ago, there was a tournament here at one of the clubs, and he had wrecked the club, or something like that, was in Rattica Sagra Grande, and evidently hit one of the palm trees while he was driving his SUV. The SUV flipped over, he got ejected somehow, and the vehicle landed on him, question his head, and he lost his life there. And then the, go ahead.
What was his condition? Was he emigrated, did they check his...
Well, more than likely he was.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just...
I don't have the exact specifics with me, because it happened quite some time ago.
I would take some too.
But the detail was that, you know, he did hit a palm tree, and he did, and the thumb. The other person that the mayor had mentioned was a lady that was leaving the swimming pool area there. She was about to give birth, you know, nine months pregnant. She came around, coming out on Oliva, she just took that turn a little bit too wide, and ended up hitting the very first palm tree right there. She was not intoxicated or anything, it was just she took the turn too wide. And at that time, when we arrived, I actually was one of the officers that arrived there, she started complaining of pains to her stomach, thought she was going into labor. We had to get an ambulance, and at first, she didn't want to go or anything, but our concern was, you know, we can't just let her leave if something happened to her child. So we had to keep her there, get an ambulance over. They went ahead and took her to the hospital, and medical treatment. But two of those are the ones that come to mind, and are probably the more drastic ones. We've had other minor, you might call fender benders or whatever, where no one was actually seriously hurt. They weren't hurt, there was damage to the vehicle and so forth, and it was because they, they hit a palm tree.
I used to walk that area in the mornings. I go out and walk most every morning, and had to quit because there's no room for the traffic that's going out that way, where there's walkers. We had one of them that went around us to the other side, but then a car came from that side and caused problems. So, yeah, go ahead.
Colin, I drive down there at least once, maybe two, three times a day, depending on what's going on. And with those palm trees in the middle of the road, and there's workmen doing whatever on any of those houses down there, on numerous occasions, there's no room to get between the vehicle, the workman's vehicle that's parked, and the palm trees, so we end up going on the wrong side of the road, you know, and coming back, I mean, they, you know, I don't know whether it takes 100 years, 200 years, or how many years to grow a palm tree, but those things are a nuisance. They are bad.
Well, I've driven by there, and I've driven during the day, and the street makes a curve, and it, you're almost in an angle where you're gonna hit a palm tree if you don't make that curve. And at night, it, I mean, this is during the day, and that's pretty hard, and at night, I'm sure it's a lot tougher, and especially if someone that doesn't even live here, or they're not aware that they're there, it's no cause of major problem. So I agree with that.
Okay. Well, number one, as far as people hitting things, they hit telephone poles, they hit culverts, they hit mailboxes, you know, that's not gonna stop because of palm trees. Number two, I would think that on behalf of the city, and in trying to preserve what we do have, that it would behoove us to approach the club and say, hey, you know, this helps you guys as much as it helps us, 'cause it's part of the neighborhood, it's part of the landscape, and, and it's something that's, I'm not gonna say unique, but it's unique to the valley, not unique to Rancho Viejo. Like, I think you mentioned one time, we quote unquote own more than 100 palm trees. So what are we gonna do? You know, dig out everything, dig out the ebony trees? I mean, it, it, that's taking it...
They're not in the middle of the highway.
Again, if we can get five feet from the club, I don't, they have a grove of trees alongside Cortez where the palm trees are, anyway. And in fact, there's enough room, there's nothing but dirt alongside of that. I know they have at least a 10-foot clearance. I don't think we do enough for the club that they wouldn't, you know, maybe do a little for us.
That has nothing to do with it. That area is dedicated golf course. We can't allow construction of that. In a 1983 court case, it was dedicated as a golf course. If we did that, then we could let them dig up Angel and make it a subdivision. We can't do that. We did, we denied an easement onto the club property for the house that's being built an inch or larger in Vida Drive, strictly because no one's over there in that area. The greens, 100 yards, 60 yards, 70 yards of what? No one's in that area, but that's dedicated as the golf course. Can't, can't, can't go onto the golf course.
Can't make a special exception?
No. And you, you could go to court, I guess, and get a, get their ruling overturned. I guess you could...
I just think that street is way too narrow to, to have two cars and a big old palm tree in the middle. That's just way too narrow a road to have all those things.
Did you want to say something, Dan?
I was just gonna ask if the right of way is gonna be staked.
What are, the right of ways, what?
Is it gonna be staked?
Stake? We, we can stake it. It's a 40-foot right of way, that's, that's part of the problem. Most residential streets have a 50-foot right of way, and, and, and the current rules are for the county, if you're gonna have a rural section road, like, like with the borrowed ditches, which we have on, on Cortez, they are, their minimum standard is 60 feet, and we got 40.
Plus, the drainage on the club side where the borrowed ditch is running down the side...
Yes.
Would also then have to be removed, but it can't be moved because that's where the tree line is. So it's, we'd have to go three feet on the, the residence side, and three feet on the golf course side, and I don't think that would stand up. But I, I agree with your point, but my understanding, I don't know this to be true, but my understanding is, at Rancho Viejo, we used to have other streets that had palms in the middle of it, and they were taken out when they did the work. And I think it's a shame, I think if they're, well, anyway, that's, you hear it there.
Difference I have, of course, what, what's being recommended here, what is the total cost?
That is, a couple of things, notes on that. That is considerably under what we had budgeted for. I mean, considerably, almost to the point where, like Dan said, does the guy know? I mean, he's doing it for like $25 a foot, and we were expecting 75 to 100. Second thing is, if we approved the contract for him tonight, he'll start within two weeks. He'll have two months to do it, but he says, barring rain and so forth, that he would finish both, both streets in approximately one month. He also is gonna need to close Rancho Viejo Drive during the day while he's putting the concrete shelters in. That will probably take two days to, to, approximately two days to do that. So it would be two towns that the people would have to go around back to Rancho Viejo Drive at the Zapata/Valboa Inter... at the Sapat de Balboa intersection, continue on to, uh, Carton and Al. Or go back the other way and go out, uh, Cortez. Or go down south by Carton seventeen thirty-two. I think that's everything that I know on that. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the G and T contract with the trees coming out as the first motion. If that fails, then we'll go to the one without the trees coming out. Do I hear a motion to approve the contract? That's written.
I, I move that we approve the contract with, uh, G and T with the removal of the palm trees as was outlined and stated.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Number eight, consideration action or resolution for nomination of Representative of Calhoun County Appraisal District, position nine. Do we have, we have historically voted for the Jan Cassidy, uh, as representatives over the years. I don't have any particular person I care to, to, um, nominate for as a representative. So if it's, it's, if it's agreeable, somebody can make the motion to, uh, that we won't nominate Representative to the appraisal district.
And I don't know if anybody else does, but I know Jan Cassidy, she is a, a nominee person.
Hear your motion to not make the nomination?
Make a motion not to make a nomination for consideration of, of the Calhoun County appraisal district.
Your second? All in favor? We don't have to nominate Jan, yet. All right, the next thing, number nine, consideration, action on purchase of a police vehicle. You've got the, um, pricing worksheet in the section on number nine. It would be replacing a vehicle that has over a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. And if you'll remember, that was what we had said sometime earlier this fiscal year, that we would replace the vehicles on a bay, um, one of the bases is when they reach a hundred and twenty thousand miles.
Is that the yes you mean?
That, that'd be the yes for the issue. That one currently has a hundred and thirty-four thousand by now.
Now, in checking with, uh, when Chief Cruz checked with, uh, the contractor, they said that it would be, uh, sometime before it actually came in. They didn't have it in stock, then would have to have it built. So we're looking about delivering sometime next calendar year. Yes?
Is this gonna be a V eight or a V six or...
It'll be the same as the Dodge that we currently have, which is a V eight.
Is there any reason we can't go with a sedan? Something a little smaller, I mean...
The only thing...
It's not such a necessity.
Well, actually, you're not gonna notice that much of a difference because of the speeds that we drive here, they're so slow, I'm so low. And, uh, if we go to a V six, what's probably gonna happen is we're gonna tend to tear up that engine before, uh, we reach those a hundred and twenty thousand miles. We've had, uh, V sixes before in the city and we've had a lot of problems with them in the transmission or the motor drive. Most of the V sixes that, uh, that are the police package right now, they're front wheel drive and will have problems with the, uh, the front wheel steering and those mechanisms. And I know that maybe you all may have read something in the Brownsville Herald, I think those are the value one, the Star, about the, the city of Brownsville using some of the V six vehicles for, for patrol. Most of those are assigned units and they're assigned to like investigators and so forth. And a lot of them are like take-home units where one person only drives that vehicle. So it gets a lot less wear and tear than the way we do. We basically run our units at least sixteen hours a day. If we're lucky, they get about eight hours rest before some of those takes them so. I really would not recommend a V six. And on this particular vehicle, if you look at the, at the breakdown there, I think it's only nine hundred and eighty-six dollars that you're paying more for the eight versus the, the V six. And if we were to maybe blow an engine on, on a V six towards the end of the second or third year before we get rid of it, we're not gonna be able to replace the engine for nine hundred dollars. I really do recommend a V eight, we have had any problems with it. Thank you.
The vehicle's been budgeted for, we have a reserve set up for it. Do I hear your motion to approve?
I make a motion to reapprove the Dodge as requested by Chief Cruz.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Number ten, consideration approval of an ordinance for the codification. Are we ready for that or do we need to table that again?
I, I really didn't expect it last month. I did expect it this month with your permission. I'm gonna invite them to either get us the final draft or be here at the next meeting.
That's wonderful. I'd love for them to be here. You might want to put even more pressure on them to be here to visit the lovely Calhoun Rancho Viejo.
I will do that.
So we'll table number ten. Did you want to speak to the board of all of them? Okay, I, you weren't here when it started, so if you did, I want to give you that opportunity. Okay. Number eleven, update on the police department event. We have, thank you, Mondo.
Thank you.
The, uh, greet the police, meet the police department is on October sixteenth. And once again, uh, invite everybody you can to come down and, uh, see the police, talk to the police, get a tour of the police department, see the, uh, the equipment they use. If you have children or want to have a figured out kit, figured out, clear bread can, have a DNA, uh, kit. Yeah, right. You're right. Uh, we can, uh, we sure would like to have, now that we're gonna have hot dogs, chips and sodas for everyone, but including the kids too. And that's October sixteenth and it's at six-thirty at, in the evening. And all of the police officers will be here. So it's a great time to, to meet them. We, we will assume that we can gather everyone together at a proper time. We'll also come into the assembly room and have any questions and answers and anybody that wants to, uh, to say something. Good or bad doesn't make any difference. The key is to meet them and find out that, give the, the police and the opportunity to meet all the citizens and the citizens to meet the police. Just a good thing for everyone to realize that the police are out here to help us and the police to realize what our community people are like. Uh, it's not on the agenda, but the Pizarro paving project is virtually complete. We have two sections that needs, two, two, uh, three small sections that need to be completed, the curb on, uh, Pima and Pizarro, from number two, Pizarro, to the country closed parking lot. And then the last section, which won't be done until after Haldago is done, is where the, uh, trucks go in and take the dirts and so forth, cause they didn't want to break down, chance of breaking down the concrete. So that'd be the last thing that will be done. And then that project will be complete. We sent out the, uh, contracts. We've had some, uh, people come in and pay. We've had some people that didn't want to pay. We've had people want to set up terms and we've had people that disagree with our measurement on, uh, how many feet of concrete they got in front of the place. So it's, but, but no big, uh, big issues so far. The loops haven't been in the body yet, but since they already hadn't occurred. But, uh, that's gone pretty well. But I can tell you, we wouldn't want to do that again. It needs to be done at the time that the road's going in, not after the road's going in. It is... I'm gonna bring this up, we can't vote on it because the agenda was already sent out and posted on the internet before, uh, Mr. Dorsett's committee. But, uh, actually, William, why don't you tell? The, the green committee had a meeting on Wednesday night and I got to meet the people that were on the committee and he's come up with a scope and, uh, the, of work and a, uh, agenda, sign people and so forth. Why don't you give us an update on that? And we'll put it on, we'll put it on, I don't want to be here for the next meeting. Uh, I'm gonna be out of town, but, uh, Mr. Helfer's gonna take care of that and, and we can put it on the next agenda to approve the, uh, the, the committee's work.
We have formed the green committee for Rancho Viejo and our mission statement is to assist and keep the town in compliance with all federal and state laws and for both the environmental well-being of Rancho Viejo and its residents. Uh, we plan to do this by establishing an environmental management system. And our members, aside from myself, will be, uh, Mr. Robert Burkhart, which obviously his expertise is the water, so he'll be addressing any issues on that. Mr. Ronaldo Cantu, uh, her law, and he's a lawyer. Uh, Miss, Mrs. Ethel Cantu on plants and xeriscaping. Uh, Miguel Ortiz for chemicals and Diane Isbell for recycling.
When is your next meeting?
Oh, October twenty-fourth and everybody's invited.
Good. Where is the meeting taking us?
Uh, they take place right here in the, and I'll, I'll get something posted as far as time and place.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, the police report's at the back of the book, but, uh, it is also over on the table. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?